All right, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Diamond Ranch Panthers. Welcome to today's meeting. I would like to call the May 21st, 2024 City Council Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Go-to webinar transcripts of the City, of the council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple app or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in person in the main auditorium in the South Coast Equality Management District, also known as AQMD. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be, they will be noted for the record. And when we get to the public comment period, this meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Sunday and Saturday at 9:00 AM and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 PM and archived for viewing at the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. And we will not, we will now proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Tai, and then please remain standing for the invocation by Associate Pastor Abkessel of the Landmark Church.
Please join me in saluting the flag that represents freedom around the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wisdom tonight. Give these leaders a strong balance of zeal and knowledge. Help all of our citizens be good neighbors to each other, and let that example start right here tonight. Please always protect our military, our police, and our fire. Lord, I ask that you bless the students of Diamond Bar as they wrap up the school year. Be with the teachers. Give them a good summer of rest and focus and watch over them also. We ask that you take care of the citizens here. We know we live and work in a wonderful city, and we want to continue that. May the decisions tonight have healthy ripples throughout this county and without, and throughout this state. Lord, be with our neighboring cities as they also strive for a better state and country. Lord, thank you for being here. Guide us all. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Here.
Mayor Lu?
Here. Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. The agenda is hereby approved. And now we have some very exciting presentations to give. First, we will be presenting for our good citizen for Miss Misty Jean Moreno, and then followed by the Diamond Ranch High School Girls Soccer Champions. If my colleague can join me out on the floor. Thank you. All right. So, good evening once again. At this time, we had the pleasure of inviting up Miss Misty Jean Moreno, our amazing good citizen and delivery driver. Hello. It's great to meet you. So you were nominated by our resident, Ms. Gail Evans. And that we wanted to recognize you for your good deeds and goodness citizen, and she mentioned that what you did for her is very, very meaningful, but extremely helpful. So we would like to recognize you for FedEx delivery driver, Miss Misty Jean Moreno, for your role in helping Diamond Bar resident Gail Evans to participate in the November 2023 general election by ensuring her ballot was collected by the U.S. Postal Service letter carrier, Ms. Joanna Johnson. So thank you. We wanted to thank you on behalf of the city and all the city council here, and everyone would thank you for going above and beyond to help the community member in need. And your kindness and compassion meant a great deal to Ms. Evans and is very, very much appreciated by her and us and the entire city. Thank you so much. You share a few words with us?
Just thank you. I'm honored. It's an honor to be here. It really is.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. All right. Now, we have the honor of bringing up our state champions, Division Five State Champions. And our Diamond Ranch Panthers, our amazing soccer team. Come on up. Look at that. Got medals on, huh? Awesome. Wow. Wow. Welcome, welcome. Wow, wow, wow. Congratulations. 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 Wow. Congratulations. Congratulations. Dr. Gomez, how you doing? Okay, I am told we, we need to check out the hardware. Wow. That's amazing. So, okay, I gotta ask, you know, I, I tried to play soccer, and I played high school sports. I ran track, and I made it to city semifinals. I thought that was pretty awesome, but you went to city, finals, and state. Who would like to share how that felt like and what your season was? What are you gonna say? All right.
It was an unreal experience, you know. This, we made history. It was awesome.
You made it so easy and simple. How was your season? Like, who can share a little bit that how, how do your season went in the beginning of the season, how you feel, and where you are now? All right. Introduce your name, please.
So I'm Valeria Reyes. It was a bit of a tough season at the beginning, but we were able to pick up at the end and get everyone together and be able to, well, yeah, go to CIF. So it was just crazy to see the transition and just years prior as well, how we would, we weren't doing so good, and now to winning state. So it was just crazy to us.
Amazing. Okay, so coming back to next year. Okay, I think we're gonna be here next year. All right. So I have one more question as being, as a being champion. As the clock ticked down, how did that feel like? Who can, who can share that? That moment? You know, we're like, yeah. All right.
Hi, I'm Marlene. The, the way it felt was like, kind of really hard to really explain because like, as soon as the, like, whistle blew, I had all the girls running to me. It was like one of the best, like, feelings anyone could ever, like, I don't know how to put it. Anyone could ever really experience having, you know, the support from, like, all these girls. Amazing.
That's amazing. Congratulations once again. Oh, Miss Patty Time.
They're being a little too humble. At CIF, we played Belle Gardens, and that was a very hard-fought game. And physical, of course, that I'm gonna say the ref didn't know what he was doing. But we pulled it off. It was three to two? Oh, three, zero? Yeah, we won. It doesn't matter. But we had to face Belle Gardens again in the last game of the, last game for the championship, for the state. And that was cold, raining, and very hard fought. But, so when they say when that belt, when that timer ticked down, I don't know about them, but I wet my pants, so.
Does, does he know that? Superintendent, can you, can you share a few words?
I'm Darren Knowles. I'm the proud superintendent of this wonderful group, and, and I got to see a few games, and they're phenomenal. They are competitors. They're student athletes. They represented not only their high school, Diamond Ranch High School, but they also represented the district and the community, both Diamond Bar and Pomona. And so we're super proud of you guys, and I just, I, I just love it. And, you know, I think we're gonna go broke because a lot of them are returning next year, so no pressure on you guys. But, you know, they, they are just, you can tell they're, they're just, they work well together, and, and that's what team's all about.
Amazing. Thank you so much. Dr. Gomez, can you share a few words?
Yeah, I, I reiterate what Val was saying. It was a very tumultuous start of the season, for sure. So I, I credit the team captains, or all the girls really, for really sticking together and, and getting through that adversity to get to where they're at. And again, I'm echoing what Mr. Knowles is saying. I'm expecting to get a second ring next year, so I'm gonna expect to be back here next, next year. No pressure, but, you know, it's, division's gonna be tougher, but at the same time, we have an amazing team to build the entire program off of. So again, super, super proud.
Amazing. Well, come in to support. Yeah.
I'm Dennis Dunn. I'm the athletic director. These girls, yeah, are just fantastic. Everyone's an all-star on this team, which is incredible to see. But the two things that they do the best is communication, and they believe in each other. And I think that's the reason that they were so good, is because they communicated well with each other on the field, and then they also believed in each other's abilities.
And what's the inscription say on, on the inside of the ring? Can somebody share?
Yeah. All right.
So inside it says, "We made history." And honestly, personally seeing it, when I, when I saw it, it kind of just gave me the chills because it was crazy. You could go ahead and see that as well. Yeah, so it was just crazy to think that we were the first team to make history for Diamond Ranch, and especially that we were the female team at the school as well, so.
Amazing. History makers. I'll circle back to our colleague. Can you share a few words? All right. So maybe I say a little too much. All right. It is a great honor. We take great pride in and pleasure in recognizing your incredible achievement and offer the best wishes for a bright, successful future both on and off the playing field. Congratulations, everyone. Christina. Melissa Franco. We have Marlene. And Brooklyn. Adji. Karen Muniz. Jasmine. Okay. And we have Janista. All right. Congratulations.
Take a good photo, yeah.
Good photo, yes.
It's gonna be a piece of some of you kind of a friend row, and then I, and then a few of you in the back. So let's get half of you here and then another half.
She doesn't have to sit down. If parents want to take pictures, come up. Take pictures.
All right. So how do you, how do you normally, like, when you take a team photo, what does it look like?
Oh, it takes a while.
She's not kneeling. Right? Straight ahead. I think there's as many parents as are soccer players.
All right. One more. One more for the city. One more. Congratulations, history makers and champions. All right. Great job. Great job. Great job.
You know our board president?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you for the recognition.
All right. Congratulations once again. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we'll move on to city manager reports and recommendations. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
No additional reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And we will move on to our public comment section. Public comment, it's a time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for two members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda that are within subject jurisdiction matter of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, and then City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining the teleconference who may have wished to speak on their public comments. I have received one speaker card from Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu, for you.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Join us tomorrow at 11:00 for an hour of creative fun as we make art from pressed flowers. You'll have a chance to make multiple works of art, including a bookmark, note card, and unique frame flower art piece. This program is for adults. This Wednesday at 4:00 PM, we'll be celebrating Children's Day by sharing fun stories and creating a connected chain of papers, person, fish, flower, or whatever you can imagine. This program is for ages five to 12 with parent or caregiver. New parents, join us at a special program designed just for you this Saturday at 10:30. Bring your new baby and learn about all the great programs and services we have for parents, caregivers, and children, and connect with other new parents, families in the community. Please visit our website, lacountylibrary.org, for more program information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cynthia Yu. And that's all the speaker cards I have. City Clerk Santana, were there any public comments, emails received, or are there any callers on the line?
Mr. Mayor, there were no emails submitted for public comment, and there are no callers on the line at this time.
Okay. Thank you. So if there are anyone else that'd like to address the city council in attendance, in person, or on the line? Seeing none, we will now close public comment. And City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events and then proceed to the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Lu, and members of the city council. On the scheduled events, the Parks and Rec Commission will be meeting on Thursday, May 23rd, at 6:30 PM in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. City Hall will be closed on Monday, May 27th, in observance of Memorial Day, and the Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:30 PM in the Windmill Room, Community Room at City Hall. Our next public safety seminar will be held on Wednesday, May 29th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 4th, starting at 6:30 PM here at the AQMD Auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have the approval of the May 7 study session and regular meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated May 1st through May 14th, approval of the treasurer's report for April, and adoption of a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any of my colleagues like to pull any items from the consent calendar? If not?
Move to approve.
And move to approve by Council, Councilmember Chow, and the second by Councilmember Lo. And City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to council, council subcommittee reports and meeting attendant reports and council member comments. And we will start with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, we had a study session right before the council meeting. I want to thank staff again for a very thoughtful, thoughtfully prepared budget. We always say that budget is a reflection of our values, and I think with this budget, we are continuing to deliver critical services that our residents deserve and demand, and I'm glad that we can deliver in a way that's prudent and that's balanced and sustainable. So thank you to our staff. And also, wanted to congratulate all the seniors. I believe next week is the last week of school, so I want to congratulate our class of 2024, and we can't wait to see what the future brings for all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to reiterate and, and what, what he said. So congratulations to the grads, and thank you staff for really thoughtful preparation of the budget. It's a really thoughtful budget. It's challenging, always trying to do more with less. So thank you for your, for your diligence and dedication. I just want to do something different during my comment time because it's my honor tonight to share about Bob Rose, a friend and colleague, and share about how he helped build our city and what he means to our city family. Some of you, ah, there he is. Please enjoy these wonderful photos. Bob Rose was a cherished husband, father, and friend. He passed away peacefully at his home in Chino, California, on April 21, 2024. Bob was born on February 9th, 1955, and his life was a testament to love and laughter that he shared with those around him, and that you can really see that in the, in the photos that are on our screen. Bob's life was filled with the joy of golfing, going out to dinner with his family, vacationing with his family, and the pride of seeing his sons grow into remarkable men. Along with the simple pleasures, pleasures of a life well-lived, his absence will be deeply felt, but his memories he created will forever be a source of comfort and inspiration. I don't know if you know this, but Bob was Diamond Bar's very first community services director. The position is now titled Parks and Recreation Director. In addition, Bob's career included stops with the city of Santa Ana and the city of Brea prior to joining Diamond Bar when we incorporated in 1989. He officially joined the city of Diamond Bar on June 8th, 1992. He officially joined the city of Diamond Bar on June 8th, 1992, and retired on June 24th, 2016. Bob graciously served the city through his leadership to develop important city amenities, such as the Peterson Skate Park, Pantera Dog Park, the Diamond Bar Center, and various city trails. His legacy to the community will continue through his work on the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Bob was the epitome of a servant leader, and he led by his positive attitude and, of course, his hearties left. He trusted and mentored dozens of other professionals in the public sector who found their success thanks to Bob's unwavering support. And we're so fortunate that some of them are here with us here in Diamond Bar. While we're sad that Bob's journey may have come to a close, his spirit will always remain alive in the hearts of those who love him. Bob is survived by his wife, Robin, and his three sons, Matthew, Chris, and Travis. On a personal note, I had the happy privilege of serving as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner while Bob was the Community Services Director. A lot of the work of the Parks and Rec Commission was all about the youth with their sports programs and facilities, kind of like what we did here today. And our meetings were always filled with excited kids and even more excited parents, and the teams that play basketball, soccer, and other sports group. You can tell that Bob enjoyed his work immensely and that he loved his people. Actually, that love was mutual. And you really can't say the name of Bob Rose in this city without a smile on your face. Thanks, Bob, for all your service to our city, for the parks and the trails and the community centers that you had such a hand in building, and for the special ways that you've touched so many, so many lives, and created so many memories. To Robin, Matthew, Chris, Travis, thank you for sharing Bob with us, and we send you our deepest condolences. Mayor, it's my honor to request that we close tonight's meeting, May 21st, 2024, our meeting in memory of Bob Rose. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Councilmember Lo, and Councilmember Tai.
That's a tough act to follow. That was very, very nice. Thank you. It occurs to me that four out of five of us started on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and that was my first contact with Bob in 1994, so it goes way back. He was a great guy, great guy, and a good golfer. He'd want everybody to know that. Spent a few days with our, my colleagues, Councilman Chow and Councilwoman Lo, and our city manager at California Contract Cities Annual Municipal Seminar. And again, a good effort that they put on. We got to hear from Supervisor Barker and Supervisor Han, and a lot of good information, I think the best, in my opinion. I think the best part was listening to the young people that, interestingly enough, were in charge of Parks and Recreation and what they've done in Norwalk, who was the host city. So it was a good time. It was a good time to share some of the information that they provided, and it was, overall, it was a great seminar. For staff, I get that it starts with Jason, because it's your shop. But as I looked around the room, I realized every director was there, and you had that input. I mean, I don't know, you could tell us how long ago that started and how it starts at the base, and we get everything that they need, and not only the directors, but those providing input. I'm proud of the product that we have. The Human Capital Investment Program, I think, is so important, and we keep after it, and it leads to Diamond Bar being an employer of choice. And I think that's very, very important today. So thank you for an outstanding budget. Thank you for putting it all together. Thank you all, each and every one of you, for all the work that you've done to make that possible. And that was, again, very exciting tonight to celebrate the Diamond Ranch High School girls' soccer team. Very successful. It was fun to watch them play, and I'm glad that we could honor them tonight. And I would say tonight, have a very, very safe Memorial Day holiday. Good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai, and Mayor Protem Ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I attended the Pomona Unified School District, State of the District event two weeks ago together with my colleagues, Councilmember Chow. And in that event, the Superintendent, Mr. Knowles, who was just here together with the soccer team, Mr. Knowles deliberately highlights of what they have achieved during the last years also for their school district. As you know, Diamond Bar has a few schools belonging to their district. And I am very happy to report that, from what the report, that they are really doing very good. And as is highlighted by one of the achievements, the girls' soccer team's championship, we just witnessed this evenings. And so that here, I want to appreciate the superintendent, all the school board members there for their leadership and continue to lead the school in that area for excellence. And I certainly wish that in the near future, we will have a more school team and school students to come to this council meeting to accept more awards, more recognition from their achievement. And also, I want to mention that a couple of weeks ago, we went to give a recognition, a special recognition, that we usually want to bring the person here for recognition, but at that time, Mayor and I went to the special occasion. The people who was awarded was Diamond Bar High School's music teacher, Mr. Achiani. We presented him with a plaque for his 35 years of service for the school district. And 35 years in our policy deserve a plaque, so we went there to present a plaque for him. I think that's very special. He also gave an excellent concert that afternoon. So that's really great event, and he was not a... Of course, he didn't come to the council meeting for getting that plaque, but I want to report to everybody that we do present a plaque for Mr. Achiani after 35 years of excellent service in the school. And with that, I will close my remark, and good night.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ten. Yes, certainly, we have a lot of awesome teachers and students in our community, and that's a big part, makes a big part of our community. And also, our awesome parent volunteers that help the school and enriches the students' experience. And I had the pleasure of supporting a few events in the past month from elementary school, middle school, and to the high schools. I'd like to thank staff for today's study session. And it's so amazing that we continue, every year, continue to elevate how we are using our resources and using our resources to make the biggest impact possible in a community and our city. Thank you so much. And as it is the end of the year, and the students are celebrating, and there's a few more days to go for some students that are taking final exams and hanging there, and this is when the second wind comes in for the school year. And then also congratulate to our graduating class, middle school, elementary schools moving up, and then also the high schools. The world is amazing as ahead of you. And we would like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. Please celebrate safely and responsibly. With that, I will say good night. And we have the honor of, as Councilmember Lo had shared, that it is our honor, great honor, to close today's May 21st, 2024 city council meeting at 7:08 PM in the memory of Mr. Bob Rose. Thank you so much.